America and two to the problem. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for.
Needles, can you take roll call for our regular meeting?
Sure thing. Commissioner Barco.
Here.
Commissioner Godiosso.
Here.
Commissioner Rakowski.
Here.
Commissioner Neary. Lisa Catania. Michael Pierce.
Here.
Myself, George Needles, present.
Thank you. Um, at this time, I'll take citizen, citizen comments again. Uh, we'll go in reverse order. We'll do the phone comments first, and then we'll take pub, pub, public comments second. So again, to call in, the dial in number is five seven one, seven four eight, four zero two one. Again, the number is five seven one, seven four eight, four zero two one. The code to enter is three seven four, six three four, six zero one pound. Again, the code is three seven four, six three four, six zero one pound. Tim, unmute your phone. Please dial star six. After muting your phone, state your name, your address, begin your comment. Be given two minutes to speak, and then you'd be placed back on mute afterwards. So I'll give that a minute for comments via the phone. Give it another thirty seconds, then we'll move on to public comments within the room.
Good afternoon. My name's Jennifer Gallagher. I live at twenty-one fifty-five Locust Street. I'm here tonight in regards to a stormwater issue. My husband and I bought our house, um, in April of two thousand nineteen, and moved in in July two thousand nineteen. At that time, the middle school repaving project was taking place, and minutes from that Board of Commissioners meeting stating that and acknowledging that our house is downhill runoff. Um, our land is the lowest spot and apparently has been known as a water issues as noted in a two nineteen ninety-two minute. Um, the prior owners didn't have any easement at the time, or they didn't allow any easement. But we've recently, and they had spoken in the past with Nicole Whitaker and, um, that gets from the minutes.
So you say you have minutes from nineteen ninety-two?
Mm-hmm.
Meeting? Okay. I was still in college then, but.
I was in elementary school, so.
You, you can hand, you can hand everything to, uh, Mr. Needles. So, so what is, so what is your main concern?
So right now, the, um, there's an unbuildable, thin wooded lot between our street and the middle school last parking lot. And it's not only helped with noise reduction, light and air pollution, but also helps serve as a natural and free means of absorbing some of the groundwater. Um, there were swells at some point, although I don't know when, um, put up in front of our house. And they hardly seem to help as first time homeowners. My husband, I and my family looked out some solutions that we could do ourselves. Um, and it wasn't until this Friday that, um, I reached up to the township, um, just asking if I needed like any permits to do some like a little drainage, some piping. Um, and at that point, that's when I spoke with, um, Barbara Kelly, Nicole Whitaker, and, uh, Jim Putman. Jim met with me and my dad, um, who was with the, uh, our rental side, um. He we stated that we are looking to remove the stormwater and he said, Jim stated that it would be, it should be looked at for the MS four project.
So you're putting an addition on your house?
No, we are not putting an addition on. We get a lot of water from the middle school, and we just wanted to take care of that. So at first, our thought was, okay, we could probably do something else um, by just diverting it away from the front of our house to the backside of our backyard spot, so it wouldn't go to any neighbors.
Are you asking the township what you would need to do to mitigate those stormwater problems? I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to get to the question that you're trying to ask us.
So I spoke with Jim. Jim stated that, um, under the better practices, it should be eligible for having storm drain input, um, granting an easement through our property. Had the four inch pipe that we were originally thinking is kind of a joke, that it wouldn't really do much to prevent the water at our house, and that he would actually recommend a twenty-four inch pipe.
Right, so.
Just asking.
Right, so it sounds like you're going to need to hire a professional engineer to do some type of background work for you to, to see what can help mitigate the stormwater pro, uh, problems. Go ahead, Lisa.
Reached out to the I know that at one point all correctly. Looking at it. Foodway is actually means that the water is crossing the road. For the most part, we're I've liked. Go back into my park. See that I did a work many, many years. Talked about doing exactly what you're saying. Not at some town. Township. Getting water is
Right.
Um. Tell you that as far as the MS four is concerned, picking is not an option for the A D E K does not want area. Rest whales. All best management. He is correct. Running for age. Orange pipe will take. I'll tell you, however, that the little district, their paving was identified that, that they aren't proposing to do. Is somebody for that purpose? Your problem. Now, the, um, one of the things that, that look at doing I'd like actually create a swell so that the water as it comes can actually go to the side. The water wake. I remember it was going right in the corner. You also or a rain leader that came down in that like you thinking. Anyway, we've looked at it a little bit. I wanted to at least give you that background, um, I have my archives are actually.
So what I'm hearing is, is the township's going to provide some type of recommendation?
How far the board wants.
So, long story short, we don't have an answer for you tonight.
Okay.
But, um, I wa- Yeah, we can do that. Right, so, uh, when we vote tonight, we'll, 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 I guess on a new business, we, we can authorize Ms. Catania to take a look at it. But right now, we don't have an answer for you. And I was unaware of the conversations that you had with Commissioner Whitaker and, um, Mr. Putman.
Right, this all just kind of really started, the wheels started really turning this week, so.
Okay, alright, so just.
I do appreciate you taking a look at it and Whitaker.
Just, yeah, just, just give a, a little bit of time. Thanks. Are there any other citizens, citizens comments tonight? Yes. The lady in the back had her hand up first, but.
Kathy Dubay, nine thirty-four Galbert Avenue. Um, I got a question about the hometown hero flags. I want to know where it stands. Uh, they're not up. There's maybe ten.
Um, I would love to answer you that question, but the Board of Commissioners is not running that program. Um, I can get you a name and contact number, um, and they can get that answered for you.
But I understand the township wasn't going to start putting any of them up?
No, the township is not taking part of putting them up. What the township did a while back was give approval to hang any hometown banners on poles that were owned by the township. Um, the party that is doing that or the organization that's doing that, um, have decided to put them up on the telephone poles going down Chi Avenue.
Dan donated his time.
Excuse me?
Dan Kelly.
Yes, yes, Mr. Kelly donated his time, so.
But I don't understand why the township.
Oh, because the township did not run the program. We don't have, we don't have bucket equipments to do it. We, we, we don't, we don't have the apparatus to, um.
Cherry picker.
Yes, cherry picker.
So Reynolds Junction over in Ogden wouldn't donate one if it's for the hometown heroes?
We weren't, uh, uh, number one, we weren't asked to help to, to install them.
I like to say that, I mean, it's like shame on everybody. Guys that gave their time, dedication, some of them lies.
Kathy, it's my understanding, uh, the organization had approached the board for the polls and gave permission for the polls for the township area polls, because at one time, they weren't even going on to the telephone poles. And you're right, uh, Dan Kelly, Kelly Landscape has donated his time for it. I do know Ogden Supply doesn't even have which, the equipment to do that. Um, but it was also the organization that stated that they were going to take care of putting them up and getting them. It's my understanding, round one is sold out, and they're working on round two to get more flags. I don't know how long the time is to order for new people, because I do give the gentleman's phone number out to everybody that asks about it, because that's all I do. And it's my understanding, round one was already really filled up real fast. It might have been twenty-five, say. Now they're working on the next twenty-five. Uh, when they continue doing it, we don't know. We, I mean, that's all the organization.
I can answer some questions. Um, I, I could tell you that they've reached out to, uh, we're going to reach out to the electrical union, because a lot of electrical companies have that bucket truck that's needed. Dan Kelly's swamped. That's why he can't get them up fast enough. He, he can't even get help. And right now, if you, in my report, you're going to hear, the township is shorthanded right now. Uh, we ca, we have five openings for part-time summer help and haven't filled one yet. We have a retiree and two guys out on disability right now. So, we're, people are reaching out to see who can help to get them up. I can tell you that. And, and part of the other problem is, Chichester Avenue is a state road. So you have to have flags, flagmen, proper coning to set anything up. But, uh, I paid for one that ain't up yet. I know what you're talking about. Right, but, but it's, it's being worked on. I can tell you that much.
Again, ma'am, it's something that the, uh, lo, local organization wanted to run. Um, the board, you know, the Board of Commissioners took a step back and we, you know, we, you know, we supported them on, on, uh, on running it.
Can you answer why they stepped back?
What, the Board of Commissioners? Because the, the organization was very adamant about doing it. They wanted to do it. It was the Republican Committee of Upper Chichester Township. They were very adamant about, about doing the, uh, the project.
Oh, yeah, I, you pull for a name, number?
Um.
Can you reach out though?
Didn't I text a name to you before?
Oh, yeah, same one?
Same guy.
Yeah, the chairman is, um.
Dave Barkoff.
Dave Barkoff. Excuse me, Dave, if you're listening, correct your name. It's Mr. Barkoff, yes. And if Commissioner Rakowski gave you your, the cell number, then by all means, please, please call him.
George Spanbauer, seven one five Johnson Avenue. And the reason I'm calling, and I know I'm going to hear the word Pendott in Chichester Avenue, well into the state. I'm here tonight because of my concern over the new island that's been, um, put in, uh, Chichester Avenue, in McKay Avenue in Albrecht, in front of Presbyterian Church. First of all, driving down growth is a distraction. The last thing you want in that area is a distraction. Number two, you're taking the shoulder away from the road. Where do kids ride their bicycle? And the other thing is, there's a lot of commercial truck with very wide, extended coming right out there close to the, to the sidewalk. Then, in the island, there's a crosswalk. And the crosswalk has a spot in the area where you can stand in the center of it. For what reason, I really don't understand, because I've always understood that state law, that once you step into that crosswalk, you own it. You get to the other side. Traffic in both directions has to stop. The other part is you've got people coming out of church, not my church, but people coming out on Sunday, a group of people. They stand out great in that area and they talk. Here you now got cars swinging around some stupid island that the state put there. And it's not the first time Pendott's made a This one, I think, is a bad one. For the safety of, of our community, I think the township should complain to them. And all I ask you to do is sit down there and stand there yourself and see if you're happy with it. We've had a crosswalk at McKay for how long? I, I know of one person being hit, and he was the crossing guard himself. And, and that accident, person was not paying attention to anything. They'd have driven over the island. Everything about it is bad. And I'm asking you to please look into it. I intend tomorrow to see the state, our state representative, uh, to see what he will do. And if that doesn't work, I'm going to go to Pendott over. For ninety-five, from Pleasant Avenue to Johnson Avenue, that area, we've had over sixty accidents. State hasn't listed as a high crash zone. And last year, a vehicle coming down Chi Avenue hit and glanced off of a car pulling out, drove over and landed on top of the bus stop. I wish the police department had taken pictures of that, where they got it on a camera, but shown it to the board and, and to Pendott, so they see it. Had anybody been sitting, waiting for the bus or standing in front of it, they would have been killed. You know what the answer was? Well, we're doing some, this is Pendott. We're doing something about this. Twenty twenty-five, we're putting in the, the rounds. Well, great. That's twenty twenty-five. What are you doing today to prevent more accidents? And I stayed on to him. I went to, to Representative Barr. He sent the letter that I sent him, and in the fall, they came out and did a study, and they made it two lane from Pleasant Avenue down to Johnson rather than four lane, which only caused more confusion, more blind spots, no turnoffs, and aggressive driving. They did that. The only thing they haven't done is move the on-ramp to ninety-five up about thirty yards, so that it takes it off quicker to allow a single lane of traffic coming down. That's where the accidents are. My concern tonight is the island, and I hope the township will get behind it and look at it, stand down there, and then stand out on that island for a second and see if you'd like to be there. All I ask for.
Thank you. Any other comments tonight? Needles, alright, I'd like to thank the residents for coming out and making comments. At this time, we'll move on to our, uh, board meeting. We're on, uh, item number five in our agenda. Can I have the approval of the minutes of, from the May thirteenth, twenty twenty-one Board of Commissioners meeting?
So moved.
Second it.
All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Item number six, have a member of the board consider a resolution authorizing escrow release, number five, for profit of Pavilion Boothwin LLC in the amount of sixty-nine thousand, four hundred forty-eight dollars and fifty cents.
So moved.
Second it.
All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
That is resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-seven.
Have a member of the board consider a resolution authorizing escrow funds be released to the estate of June M. Wilson, Lisa D. De Ferdenando, in the amount of two thousand, eight hundred seventy-three dollars and one cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
That is resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-eight.
Have a member of the board consider a resolution authorizing escrow funds to be released, S B Conrad, in the amount of four thousand, four hundred sixty-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents.
So moved.
Second it.
Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
That is resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-nine.
Have a member of the board consider a resolution authorizing escrow funds be released to S B Conrad in the amount of two thousand, four hundred sixty-five dollars and eighty-seven cents.
So moved.
Second it.
Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
That is resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty.
Item number ten are on our agenda. Have a member of the board consider a resolution authorizing escrow funds be released to Sonoco Logistics in the amount of eleven thousand, two hundred fifty dollars and zero cents.
So moved.
Second it.
Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
That's resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-one.
Have a member of the board consider a resolution authorizing escrow funds be released to Sonoco Logistics in the amount of nine thousand, six hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty-five cents.
So moved.
Second it.
So motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
That is resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-two.
Have a member of the board consider a motion accepting the extension granted by Larry Jackson for his reverse subdivision application for three thirty-five dash three thirty-seven Bellevue, Bellevue Terrace.
So moved.
Second it.
Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Have a member of the board consider a motion accepting the proposal from Barth Consulting for Economic Development Service related to the LERTA project at the rate of hundred fifty dollars an hour, subject to the review of the township solicitor.
So moved.
Second it, I got questions. Uh, I don't, I don't see in there. I see the rate of a hundred fifty dollars. Um, I'm not in favor of this tonight anyway, but, um, but we budgeted fifty thousand. I think it shouldn't be stated in there not to exceed the fifty thousand dollars if the board's going to approve it, which is not in there. I'll be the first to say I was the first to be pushing the LERTA project, uh, probably two years ago. And, um, this is the only one that came in front of us, and I, I just think we're jumping. He convinced me a little bit of the LERTA doing it and the, uh, incentive for people coming into this town, but he, he's also a planner too at the same time. He worked for Gilmore as a, and he was part of a planner that we got for the Boothwin Town Center. I just think there's probably other ones out there that we should have at least interviewed to talk to. And, uh, because we're doing the same thing tonight. We had to get different bids. We're spending fifty thou, up to fifty thousand dollars on this thing and didn't get anybody, any other prices. I'd just like to make sure it's in, if, if the board approves this tonight, at least have it in there that it doesn't exceed the fifty thousand was budgeted for it.
Well, the budget item is, we, 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 we were in the works of doing this for a very long time, as you stated. Uh, the budget allowed for an individual up to fifty thousand dollars. Um, our township manager, Bennett, numerous people, gave him, or we entrusted him to bring us the right candidate, uh, to the township. Commissioner Neary took a tour today of his work that he's done previously. Yeah, he has eleven years' experience. He's, has, um, close to a half a billion dollars in, um, gener, generate, um, generating new businesses in, in, uh, different, uh, municipalities. Has a proven track record, and I, I believe this is a step in the right direction.
Well, I'll correct you on that. Yeah, we haven't, it was myself who's pushed the LERTA program for the last two years. He did put an RFP out, our manager. He, he was not convinced on the, the candidates that were, responded to the RFP a few months back. He came back to the Board of Commissioners and told us he would interview some other ones, bring them in front of us to see what they could offer. He brought one, and we're spending up to fifty thousand. This gentleman, anybody that's, the incentives is up to the Board of Commissioners on bringing in the tax incentive or bringing in eleven billion or whatever number you just said. I just feel that we should have had more than just one. We waited this long. We could have waited another month or two, just because he's ready to get on to the sidewalk, as I was told last week. Run with it.
Your.
There was a lot of, there was a lot of planning done also with Percival, wherever town that is, up in Lancaster County. So, in Bucks County, so I gave our manager three or four other names. And I'm, I just don't, if we have to get bids for the generator and everything else, and we're spending forty to fifty thousand dollars, don't get me wrong, I'm the first that wanted to try to bring the incentive ever since three twenty-two project for the LERTA program. But I just think we're jumping a gun. I think we could have looked at a couple more people. Um, but that's just my opinion, because I will be voting no for it, whether the board, but there should be something in here. We don't exceed the fifty thousand dollars.
That's all I have. I would just advise the board members that if we set a cap on this, that you have to be very conscious as to what activities you deem that you feel that this person should be doing, or we'll have to come back, we may have to come back to the table. So, you know, there's been various things that commissioners have talked to me about that they're interested in having done in this community. And, you know, when I look at that rate and what the activity would be that would have to get that done, if we veer from the LERTA project to do some of these other economic development activities in the township, there is a good possibility you could spend more hours than that. So what I will do is I will manage that budget. However, as everybody, any recommendations from the board of any meetings that they'd like them to attend or any properties, then I would ask that we do at a monthly basis that you authorize that activities in case the, in the event that it does exceed the budget at some time.
So it's a one-year contract. I wouldn't advise putting a cap on it because it could go slightly over, you know, have our hands tied. George Needles will manage our budget as he does every year with every other line, line item. We're, it's let the public know, I believe, four commissioners, our assistant township manager, and our township manager, all are, all in, all in favor, all in favor of this. Again, we're trying to stimulate growth. We're trying to bring businesses in, and this man has a proven track record. I think it's a step in the right direction. And it's a year. It's a year contract, so he has a year to prove himself. With that said, there's a motion.
Hold up, hold up, hold up. No, hold up, hold up. You're saying there's a, no, wait a minute.
There's a motion in a second. Mr. Rakowski.
No, no, wait a minute.
I gave you time to speak.
Yeah, and you stated this guy has a year. What happens in eight months if we're at forty-five thousand and he hasn't brought nothing to the Board of Commissioners?
Well, then, Ed.
And you only have four commissioners here tonight?
Well, then, Ed, he serves the pleasure of the board. It's not, it's, I'm not, I'm not bringing in, I'm not bringing him in and giving him a blank check. He has to prove himself, and we're going to give him the opportunity to prove himself.
And just to put it on record, as I stated earlier, I'm not against the LERTA, bringing in the LERTA to this township. That was a recommendation from the state two years ago with three twenty-two project. We just want to expand it for the whole township and, as a matter of fact, possibility of the new zoning issue that we have on Township Line Road. There's a lot of empty space there. I just felt that you brought one and you only did one, whether it's a month down the road or, it took two years to get this far. And you only have four commissioners here tonight. You don't, maybe in favor, but she doesn't have a vote here from the board.
I didn't say she's voted tonight, I just said. Motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Thank you. Item number fourteen, have a member of the board consider a ordinance amending the zoning ordinance, repealing Article fifteen pertaining to the C.C. R.C. District and replacing it with the new zoning district to be known as the Township Line Commercial District.
Second it.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
That's ordinance seven forty-seven.
Items number fifteen through seventeen will be read by our Vice Chairman, Commissioner Joe Baack.
Thank you. Consider a motion accepting the bid of A.F. Thamen in the amount of four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and sixty cents for the twenty twenty-one Upper Chichester Township Road Program.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion accepting the proposal from Sterns, Conrad, and Schmidt Consulting Engineers Incorporated for a trash and recycling collections efficiency and routing optimism study not to exceed forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars, subject to the review of the township solicitor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion accepting the proposal from Penn Power Systems for work related to installing the previously acquired generator at the Fury Road Fieldhouse in the amount of seventy-two thousand, twenty-four dollars.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. For numbers, for item numbers eighteen through twenty, this will be read by Commissioner Edward Kowski.
Consider a motion accepting the proposal from Herbert Roland and Grooveck, Inc., for the development of a master park, recreation, and open space plan not to exceed eighty thousand hours, subject to the review of the township solicitor.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a resolution accepting the CBL Master Park Plan and resolving or implement the plan improvements.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
That's resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-three.
Consider a motion granting a fee waiver request from Representative Craig Williams for the use of the Fury Road Fieldhouse for a senior expo on June eleventh, twenty twenty-one.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. For the remainder, we'll have Commissioner Joe Neary.
Thank you, Mr. President. Consider a motion accepting the proposal from McNeese Wallace and Nurk LLC for a fee of eighteen thousand, five hundred dollars, as well as all out-of-pocket expense, including filing fees and publication costs related to the forthcoming twenty twenty-one bond issuance. So moved.
Second it.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion authorizing McNeese Wallace and Nurk LLC to advertise an ordinance authorizing a bond issuance for the purpose of funding the unfunded liability in the Upper Chichester Township Post Employment Benefit Trust, the Upper Chichester Township Police Defined Benefit Pension Plan, and the Upper Chichester Township Non-Uniform Defined Pension Plans. So moved.
Second it.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion authorizing the sale of various township vehicles and equipment. So moved.
Second it. Yeah, it was, it was brought to my attention that the medics may want to swap, swap out their twenty thirteen Ford Tars compared to, and then put theirs up for sale since it's older.
Okay.
And this one being newer.
You're gonna be that one with what we have on horses.
Oh, okay. Either or, whatever, and then I'll put theirs up on the list.
As motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Finally, consider a motion approving the list of bills in the amount of five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Second it.
So motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to our professional report, and we'll start off with our township solicitor, Mr. Michael Pierce.
Any questions for our solicitor? We'll move on to our township engineer, Ms. Lisa Katania.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do you have a copy of my report where the rest?
Can you do that? Do we need a vote on that, please? I just, all right, have a motion in a second to proceed with the map change. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Would it now or do you want to do this?
Let's just do it now. So motion in a second to look into the Locust Street stormwater issue.
Second it.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Thank you. That's all I have. I'm all in.
Any questions for our township engineer?
Yeah, is there an issue with the school bus parking going, with the stormwater going down that way still or?
At Locust Street?
At Locust Street, yeah.
I got it. Yes, that question.
And do we have the list of street yet for the?
I'm sorry, I just do that last Thursday night. No, I did, I did have a copy of it. I have my big copy if you want that.
Oh, it's bigger than last year's, right?
I, I got a question on that. I mean, I was going to change some of the stuff to go up to Cherry Tree, so that's, is that going to be on here? I didn't notice.
You said it. Did our engineer say?
Yeah, okay. All right. All right, that's all I wanted to know.
There's other, any other questions for our township engineer? We'll move on to our township manager, George Needles.
Good evening. All township reports are on file. As you can tell, it was a very busy meeting, getting set up for the second half of the year. It's been a very busy year, and we've authorized some things tonight that are going to consume quite a bit of time, so we'll just be humming along as usual. Thank you.
Any questions for our township manager? Now we'll move on to our commissioners' report. I'll start with the Vice Chairman, Commissioner Joe Baack.
Thank you. Like we talked about last week, we're still trying to get some part-time help for the Highway Department. We have a Public Works meeting scheduled for next week to try to prioritize some of these working jobs we have lined up because they're a little shorthanded right now. George covered the generator. We took care of that. I didn't get a report from the Sewer Authority this week, so I have nothing to report there.
Anything else?
No.
Any questions for our vice chair? Now we'll move on to Commissioner Edward Kowski.
Thank you. All reports are on file. George, were you able to give everybody their reports that I forward to you?
Yeah, we can go.
Okay. Boothland Town Center, we're pleased to announce that we're having our first open house community engagement next Thursday night, June seventeenth, at the Boothland Fire Company. Ballrooms of Boothland from four P.M. to eight P.M. The Boothland Task Force are excited about this being, given with all the surveys they got out there, trying to let the people know their vision of the Boothland Town Center, and the area, the map and all that, so we're excited about that. Other than that, I mentioned about the car being rotated, so they'll figure that out for the sale, or if it goes back onto the sale. Other than that, I think I have it. Are you doing Nicole's, George, report? Well, the only thing I had extra was because of the Heart and Soul, they're having their second summit that was just given to me, was just given to us tonight, June twenty-ninth, from, at the Community Center on Marcus Street, June twenty-ninth, from four to eight P.M. It's a Heart and Soul Summit, Part Two. Part One will be June seventeenth, over at the Boothland Ballrooms of Boothland. And we're doing.
I got a question. Lisa can probably list this. While she's coming out to look at Locust Street, did you want to have her take a look at the Esben's property at the end? I think that's up Land Avenue, whatever, over there?
No, we fixed, our first, we fixed that.
Did you?
They worked on it.
Okay, good.
It was, they're just, we were waiting for some storms. I don't know what happened, but he's been pretty much satisfied.
All right, good.
Thank you.
I don't think we had to, Commissioner, President Portis voted on earlier tonight, tomorrow, from ten to one. There's a senior exposé held by Senator, Representative Craig Williams. Again, it's from ten to one, and I'll be here at the Council Building. Corrected myself. If, he might not mind.
Commissioner Neary.
Thank you, Mr. President. The financial reports, good evening, everybody. The financial reports are available, and also the Tax Collector's Report is here. I don't know that we need all of the detail. I was just looking for the summary report, but I do appreciate the Tax Collector's efforts in that matter. The police report is also available at the township for review, and I was going to mention the expo, but Michael took care of that. So that's all I have, and I appreciate everybody's patience and their seat.
Any questions for Commissioner Neary? Now we'll wrap up on my report. Don't have much tonight, except that we did vote on the extension letter for three thirty-five to three thirty-seven Bellevue Terrace. As I mentioned last week also, we gained eighty-one touches for Avenue Main Development. There's a potential hotel that might be coming to our township. Plans were submitted. They're being reviewed. We're receiving comments from our professionals. Last comment that we will be receiving is from the county planning board, and then they will move on to our planning board in July. Eight twenty Columbia Avenue subdivision, TNT, as I mentioned last week, they will presenting to the Board of Commissioners in July. And then I believe Duncan Dunn, it's four sixty-four Conchester Highway, it's coming to our planning board. I don't have any other, anything else to add, so with that said, I think we want to do business.
Commissioner Neary, government.
So one of the, so one of the items that we've been working on is identifying, searching for a finance director. This is a position that's been budgeted for two years now that we've, we have not filled yet. So right now, we've put it out there a couple of different channels, and we're not really having much success bringing in candidates. So we reached out to the Maynor Center at Lafayette College. The Lafayette College Maynor Center provides services to municipalities, basically for a breadth of things, but one of the things they do is they complete searches for candidates. So they provided us with a proposal, and the proposal includes meeting with the commissioners, search committee, and/or staff to assist them in defining the responsibilities of the position, setting the expected salary and benefit expense, establishing the recruitment and employment procedure, identifying the medias for publication advertisement, scheduling the interview process, preparing and nailing the position advertisement in approved outlets and/or professional publications, reviewing the resumes received, checking references, and recommending a pre-approved number of candidates to the township to interview, preparing a list of interview questions, and if the township chooses participating in the interviews, conducting investigations into candidates, and assisting the board in negotiating the terms of employment with the chosen candidate. Right now, the Maynor Center is assisting Concord Township in their search for a finance director, as well as Upper Providence, in their search for a finance director here in Delaware County. So I'd ask the board if they are interested in pursuing this route to help us fill that position, to approve the rate of ninety-five dollars an hour, given the services. They agree that the total cost of the services will not exceed five thousand dollars plus travel expenses. And candidly, in conversations with them, they have an applicant pool for these types of positions, so they believe the cost could be significantly less. Even at our top salary range, if we were to hire a person within the next month, we would fall under our, well under our budget line items for that position, since we initially had budgeted it starting earlier in the year. I believe that this would be an appropriate use of some of those funds to help us fill that position.
Motion in a second. There's no comments from the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
So, Mike, we had spoken, and it was brought up last week, that there is a parcel identified in the, in the Boothland Town Center area that would have a best and highest use as a municipal property. That property is currently That property is currently out at sheriff's sale, so we had discussed. I guess what we're looking for is some guidance as to what would be the applicable process to, to eventually acquire that property. You know, we had spoken about there being a bank lien on it. So I guess what we're looking for is like, is this something we should approve an appraisal, go on appraisal and go with the hand money and attempt to purchase, or should we?
How many, what, what is the size of the lot?
Yeah, it's not, it's, it's not a big ask. I think we already have a lien on it, because we boarded it up, and the basement filled with water, we had some issues. And what we're looking for, and since the community's here and talking about it, it's, it'd be a, for the Boothland Town Center, the objection of that is walkability, for people to be able to get places and do things and park and just be able to walk around. That's the vision. That's the plan, that's this whole plan that we're trying to do. It may not happen this year, it may not happen five years, ten years, whatever. This property has been sitting vacant now for a quarter of it. And there's actually another piece of land that we lean, because we cut the grass on that one, which is probably about ten feet wide or fifteen feet next to it. The goal would try to get this piece of property, and trust me, I'll sit up here and I, and I would not waste the taxpayers' money of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, because I knew the property. That's not my goal here. The goal was to get it, to make it a community park, and so if people are coming to the shops or the stores or the restaurants, and have somewhere to park, and we're not bottlenecking Meat and House Road. This is right on Second Avenue. Like I said, it's, we would like to look into it, and, but I don't want to spend a hu, I'm, there's no way in heck it. Right. Right, to monitor, to see, and it may not at the sheriff's, so as you said, the hand money's eighteen thousand, but the mortgage is a hundred and eighty-seven. I would like to be able to go back to the bank afterwards and try to negotiate something for the, for. Right, so, I just, we just wanted to bring it up and let the public know, we're not buying it. We're just looking into it, and it would be nice to acquire, so, but thank you.
So Mr. Pierce, can you please monitor this situation for us? I think that concludes our new business. I'd like to thank the public for coming out tonight. I'll stick around if anybody has any questions, and thank you for coming. Have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.
Good night.